So our next folks who will be presenting will be Bill Montgomery, who has worked with the school district before. In fact, Bill, I think you've worked with all the school districts in Delaware County pretty much. And then Tim Lambert, who is the, he has kind of the career when it comes to technology. But we asked Mr. Montgomery to do this study, what, back almost September maybe? Wasn't it, Bill, September or October?
It was in the fall.
Because we were looking at our numbers and really worried about some of our elementary schools becoming overcrowded, making sure that we have the right foundry lines, things like that. And he's the expert with this. So you have that presentation. I think I do have maybe a few extra copies. Thank you, guys, for being patient with us.
During the presentation, I've lived in this county. It was interesting to see what's going on with a friend of theirs, a graduate of the department.
Okay.
It means a lot. And see what they're doing with the program. It's interesting. The new tents were actually, you went up there and you could walk there.
Yep.
It's fabulous.
Yeah.
They hold to their obligations of not being able to.
I mean, for a fact, the majority is really excited. It's right next door to them. They probably have half, there's good population going there.
So for some clarification, you may see some slides in here that I did not include. I didn't think we included everything, just the basic ones.
And my name's Bill Montgomery. I'm with Montgomery Educational Institute. And with me this evening is Tim Lambert, who's with Absolute Technology Inc. for ATI. I'll give a little bit of our background as we go into the slides. Very powerful, simple statement. We have a preschool vision for nurturing power. All students become career or college level. Whenever we do any type of enrollment projection, demographic study, et cetera, we always try to keep in mind what your vision statements are, what your mission statements are. We read them and we do whatever type of scenarios are developed or other studies with the team. We keep your statements in mind. But first of all, I do want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to do another enrollment projection and demographic study. We were here probably 10 or 11 years ago and we did a somewhat similar study to what we've done with the CIC tonight. And we came back about five years later and we did a little smaller study in order to get the money from the state with PlanCon to build the addition at the Ardmore School. So, and then there was a couple of other little projects that we were asked to do in between. But I found this study to be quite interesting and your enrollment projections. And we'll get into that again. You'll see all those slides. Your enrollments have really just kind of, they've gone down, they've gone up, they've gone down, they've floated along, and now they're up a little bit. But they've stayed very consistent, which you'll see also reflects the live births. But the enigma, what you'll see is the effects that SEL students, students with, English as their second language and students with special ed needs have kind of spewed a little bit of, I don't know how to use that word. Has kind of changed the way buildings look and the capacity of some of your schools that could house additional students. But because the kids are being used in classrooms and are being pulled out, it has affected you more that way. There's our project team. I want to introduce them, some superintendent. And then you've seen the names here. Pullman, Alton, the owner of the primary, Jeff, Greenstein, Timothy McPart, Maura Nash. They all contributed. They gave us the information. They gave us data. They know the school district inside and out. They also know the boundaries. So working with us and them, we were able to develop the projections with CIC. So let's say my name, I'm Bill Montgomery. I do have 44 years of educational experience. I have been a board member for a number of years. And for the last 15 years, we run this company and do educational planning and project management. Tim, Tim has 20 years of education, experience in education with an amazing technology background. And what kind of stands in my mind, Absolute Technology out, is that most of all their work has been in the educational field. So not only do they know the how of doing everything and have all the tools necessary to do the enrollment projections, they also know the why we do things in education that might be different in the business world. That certain things that affect us might affect businesses primarily when we deal with children. And when he does the integrated information system and the long-range scenarios. The project is divided into four phases. That's how we broke it up in order to bring some clarity to it. First phase, we have project reasons, enrollment projections. Then we develop scenarios that we work with the team to develop as well as propose. And then we have a draft proposal. We call that a draft because it remains a draft. Ladies and gentlemen, you see it, we make the decisions as time goes on as what we might conclude. We're going to move to Tim. He'll go over the different enrollment projections, live births, and then we'll just talk about some of the demographics.
Good evening. My name's Tim Lambert. So we did break this up into four specific, almost like deliverables. Like what is it that we're trying to get from this project? So the first one was boundaries. You'd be surprised to know that the boundaries are a little, like right now, you kind of use them based on individual roads. You say, okay, this road belongs to this school. And it wasn't like as precise. There was some like overlaps, some like little anomalies. So if you can flip to the next slide. So first thing we did is we actually went through all the streets and we identified the left and right side of the street. What, based on your documentation, what side of the street belongs to what school? And that's when we found out that there was a few. And what happens is you might say, okay, I'm going from 100, 1 to 100. And they'll say, okay, that off goes to Ardmore. But then you might see this little part that says 50 to 60 goes to Alden. And you're like, well, wait a second. You're kind of overlapping there. So that's where we kind of figured that out. We identified for every street in the entire district, what side belongs to what school and specifically knowing exactly where they are. So we actually got the newest street file from the county to make sure that we were in compliance, that we had everything that's out there that's new. And so you see this whole diagram there, it's on all the streets that we signed. And if you go to the next slide, that kind of, when you take a look at that, this is what your boundaries look like. Sometimes it's the center line of the street. Sometimes it's parks or something that's, that's the boundary. But now we have definitive, this is, if you live here, this is what elementary school you go to. And then you all feed up into the middle of the high school. And all the streets have again been exported, but down to each individual line segment. So actually say, 1 to 99 of Main Street goes to this school. 101 to 199 goes to this school. Segment is like any intersection to intersection. So it doesn't tell you the whole string. It won't say 1 to 1,000. It'll actually give you every 100 block in it. So there's no, there's no question exactly where that student would go based on this. And one of the things we can do, and we're more than happy to, is we can export this so it can be put into a Google map or something like that that you'll win people might want or anything like that, as well as PDF. GIS allows for a lot of different functionality. When you think of Google Maps and then stuff like that, that's all kind of similar technology. So we can, what we use here, we can also export it to other various formats. So that was our first part, is making sure that your boundaries are accurate. So, because the boundaries really make up the key to projections. How can we project if we don't know where the kids are supposed to go, you know, where, based on where they live? So if you want to, the, one of the main things was the boundary. But then if you go to the next slide, there's a lot of different factors that you can take into account when you're looking at projections. So it's not just, you know, like we said, the boundaries. It's also, how many kids are born in that area? And you're, you get the data from live births based on municipality. Now your municipalities don't line up perfectly with your elementary school boundaries. So we kind of do a ratio, okay? Based on how many kids were born in this municipality and how many showed up five years later, we can get a ratio of how many of those kids are coming from that municipality to that elementary school. And we'll show that in a further slide. You can go back. That's fine. Also, in and out of catchment. So what that means is you live in a certain catchment, but you attend a different school. We have to take that into account too. And a lot of times, you know, maybe they're following a sibling. Or one of the big things is your, what I call silo programs or your autistic support, emotional support, ELL. All those different programs are taking kids out of their neighborhood school and into a specific school for their needs. So that has to be actually accounted for separately. And we'll get into that because that's actually one of the crux that we'll get to when we look at the scenarios. Is you're not, as Bill had mentioned, you're not necessarily changing enrollment overall. You're changing the flags that are associated with students. So you might be sending more kids to Ardmore because that's where your ELL population is and you have more ELL kids coming in. So Ardmore is getting larger, not because of the area, but because of the programs you have housed in that school. Other things, if educational plan changes, that really was not, that's if you're going to change grades or close a building or change boundaries. That was already in the works. We would take that into consideration. The big one is grade to grade changes. So what happens over time, you know, it's called a cohort survival method, where it's like if you had 100 kids in first grade, in the following year you have 90. And then next year you have 100, then 90, 190. You kind of assume if you have 100 there now, you'll have 90. So it's kind of a whole trending methodology. That's really where the majority of the projections get in. And when we actually get into scenarios, I'll show you how we break this down into a little smaller manageable groups for actually doing different analysis if you have questions in what ifs situations. And the last is the demographics, or the new residential areas. And I'll let Bill discuss that.
All right, demographic study. It's an enrollment projection and demographic study. And they, they work hand in hand. In order to find out where your enrollment's going, we take a look at the demographics of the boroughs that feed the school district. We also walk every school. Superintendent, I'm sort of, we visited every one of the elementary schools. We visited the middle school. We wanted to make sure that all the classrooms are being used and in what areas they're being used in. And if there is any classrooms that aren't being used, we would so know that. The demographics, what we found, and it's somewhat similar to the live births and it kind of remains the way it's been. But what's that downturn in the economy seven, eight years ago when everywhere, homes weren't sold and the economy had problems? The economy started going back, some of the home sales were selling. There is no real large area where housing development would be going in. I did touch base with most all of the borough managers. A couple of them had not returned my call and never gone back to me. But I did visit every community and drove through all the areas. And from what I'm seeing today is similar to what I saw 10 years ago and five years ago. Interesting, like in speaking with the gentleman from Lansdowne, they're starting to see some movement in of folk that are working in Philadelphia and maybe a younger population. I'm seeing it all, and speaking of that gentleman, in some of the homes that were occupied by seniors where there were empty nest rooms, they're starting to move out to some school age families or moving in. So on the demographic side, and when you see the live births, it very much here was your enrollments that just kind of like float right at that 5,000, I mean, which is good. You don't want to be splashing up to a line of someone who will be dropping. And that the communities are absolutely reflecting the learn parts what you're seeing in these schools. Have any questions on that before I move on?
So we talked to different building blocks that we, that we take into consideration when doing enrollment projections. So this is actually your live birth all the way back to 1981. And you can kind of see it's like a little wave motion going up and down. If you were adding all the different municipalities up, the actual numbers are down here. So that's where your students are being born has a direct and immediate impact on what's going to happen five years later. Who's going to be enrolling in kindergarten? And then six years later, who's going to be enrolling in first grade? Because kindergarten is not a mandatory grade, you have to look at code furs. So if you want to go to the next slide. You probably already know what your enrollment is over time. But again, this is just the enrollment back in about 10 years or so. You can see a slight decline, leveling off. This year it went up a little. We'll actually see that when we look at the overall enrollment numbers. You'll actually see these trends of, you know, kind of look diagonally of the students going through the system. So move to the next one. I wanted to pay special attention to this. So as I've mentioned, while your enrollment in certain areas may be stable, the number of students that have been allocated, diagnosed with AS or that are in the ELL program has actually gone up. You can see we're all the way back, you know, 10 years ago you go to 50. Now you have 100. You doubled in 10 years the number of ELL population. And I'll get into more detail of how we actually break this down. We actually break it down to smaller levels than just overall the district. But when you look at any kind of projection, it's easiest to do it with a larger population set. So if you were to break this down into like little neighborhoods, you'd have like one kid here, one kid there. You can't really project one kid. So it's best to project it as a district and then break it down into those little, into the smaller areas. And you can see we have it continuing to go up for the next 10 years. The same with autistic support, having a larger impact. We did the same for emotional and LSS, but they are pretty stable right now. And they've been stable for the last couple of years. So we didn't factor them in. We just said, we're going to continue to assume that these are going to stay stable. But we're going to pay special attention to these two programs because they're going to be, they're going to affect your capacity. They're going to affect the utilization at your buildings and how their, your space is being utilized. So the next slide. One slide that was, that we wanted to present here is where are the ELL students coming from? And you can kind of see that there's a population throughout, but the majority are either the north or the south. They're actually, you know, up near Ardmore and this Lansdowne and down near Collin and Long Street. So regardless of where you put the program, some kids might have to go further than others. Unless you had programs in a lot of different schools, which is not always economically feasible. If you were to look at the siloed programs, that, this is one of the things we want to look at. When we say GIS, and that's kind of, besides the roads and the boundaries, we also plot all the students over time so we can actually see where they live year after year after year and if they're moving. And a lot of times what happens is when the kids go into these programs, they stay in the programs for, until they graduate out into the middle school. So when we look at the projections over the entire district, we actually have them for every individual school. And that'll, and that's a supplemental document. But you can see how it went down. This is just, up to this line here is where we're at right now, the summer of that. But, you know, it went down, stable, it was going back up a little. And then you'll see, this is what I was talking about, when you see things going diagonally. This is, you know, these kids are going to this grade, to this grade, to this grade. So you can kind of see it going across. You had a bubble here. So you actually have, like right now, 421 kids in 10th grade and 314 kids in 11th grade. Well, when that, that lower number graduates out, you're not going to see that. But when you see this big one going through, you're going to actually see it drop in your enrollment because you've had a big bubble come out of the, of it. It's not that your enrollment's like going to, is taking a nosedive. It just means that large population of students is graduating out. And then it could be followed by a smaller. But this is where you'll see everything kind of going across. And over the course of 10 years, you're going to see a little bit of an upswing, but then it's going to come back down and even out. The same, it's kind of like consistent for this area. So any questions on this before I move on to the next slide? Jump in. Because we're keep building, we're going to keep building on this. So the first thing, you know, if you want to move to the next slide. So the first thing we did was the boundaries to make sure that we're, we're all talking about what student is supposed to go to what school. And we look at the projections. Those projections, and we didn't show the individual schools. But those projections are based off if the students continue to go to their schools as, as they have been, which means some of them are going to be out of boundary, some of them are going, the majority of the in-boundary. And the programs, the siloed programs are all in the same location. So your Ardmore has your ELL. And we're getting into that as well because that's when, when we look at scenarios now, the question becomes, all right, let's look at all these different variables. What are our utilization at these buildings? Where are these programs located? What happens if we change the boundaries of a school? It'll change the utilization. What happens if we change where a program's located? For example, we move the ELL population to a different school. What happens to Ardmore? What happens to that new school? And that's where, as a team, we're all, we actually have tools that we go through. We kind of say, what happens, what happens, what happens? And we do those changes and it changes the numbers for us. Until we get to the point where we understand what's going to work best, not just for now, but for the future. And that's where, what Mr. Montgomery had said, where he actually did walkthroughs of all the school. I guess we, one thing we didn't show, but what we did is had a large discussion about capacities. How many students can adequately fit in the building and be educated? So we went through and we identified every large space and small academic space and then allocated, okay, how many kids can this school hold reasonably? And then when we actually look at the...
Just one second. That's an important piece. You have architects of record. They come in and they look at your facilities and they use the state with, as PlanCon. If you remember, that's 660 square feet. Anything on one side of it doesn't count as a classroom. So on the other side of it does count as a classroom. So you might see an architect of record have capacity at a lower number than you actually have kids in the building, doesn't mean they're sitting on the radios. It just means they might have removed that room because the closet, when you take the closet out of that room, it's all below 660. So keep that in mind. With your capacities, in, in some of the schools, look overcrowded. You do have, there is some space in some of the schools.
So right, so now we'll discuss like the scenarios and how they, how they get built. So the first thing we do is we break down the district into smaller manageable areas. We call them NPU's, Neighborhood Planning Centers. So we look at the municipalities, we look at your current elementary school boundaries, and we kind of break them up and say, okay, let's, let's break these into smaller groups that we can then move around. You know, if we move this piece over here, what happens? If we move this piece over here, what happens? But they still have to be large enough to be substantial for us to do projections. Because we take those projections and we actually do a projection for each NPU. So we look at every NPU so we know what's going to happen 10 years down the line. So if we were to move, let's say, Y1 to Park Lane, then we'll know not just what those individual kids who live there now, but what it's going to look like 10 years down the road. And then we also take, and we actually break, branch out the ELL and AS population. They don't get assigned. When we move one of these things, we don't move those kids because they're being actually sent to a program. So they wouldn't be affected if you were to move one of these NPU's to a school. Those kids in those programs are still going to continue to go to those programs that are located for schools.
I just want to know, what are the acronyms, RIT, ELL, and AS? What does, I'm out of, so that...
AS is autistic support?
Okay.
ES is emotional support. LSS is life skills support?
Life skills support.
Yes, that's really, students with a lot of issues, yes. ELL is English Language Learner, or it could also be ESL, English as a Second Language. I don't know if they're, I think of them in a changeable way. I think that's everything. There's MDS, but they get rolled into the LSS. I don't know if that's what this is. So that, does that answer the question? Okay. So just so you know, they're put into specific programs. So Ardmore has an ELL program where they specifically have teachers skilled to teach those students. So it's, it's more bank for your buck. If you have them in, in that location, then you can have one teacher. Instead of having like one teacher teach three kids, you can have one teacher teach multiple, you know, a classroom that's coming from different areas of the, of the district. Because if, let's say you, if you only have three kids here, like when we saw the dots, you have a teacher here, you're paying for a full teacher for three kids. You might be paying a full teacher for Evans for five kids. And then you might need just as many teachers up in Ardmore as you have now to manage those kids. It's, it's, it's really economics, you know, making sure that, you know, the district is responsible. So the next slide. So how we set it up is the official capacity, we, we mentioned walkthroughs of the entire, all the buildings were done so we can get a good space usage. And then we adjust the capacities based on how, you know, how that school is configured. We generated the NPU's and we did projections at the NPU level. And then also RE is regular education. That's just anyone who doesn't have, is not in a specific program. And then identify potential scenarios. So we identified a couple of scenarios that we were looking at. So go to the next slide. So that whole part was just to explain what scenarios are and why we did them. Now we're actually going to show what the results were of those scenarios. So this was the recommendation. And it's, it's a two-part. So the first part is, I guess, two parts. So right now, some of the kids move, don't go to their neighborhood school. It's not a large number, but it is, it does have an impact when you're talking across your district. Because you might have more kids choosing to go to one school from outside the catchment. So you want to make sure that all the students are going to the correct school. And that's what we go all the way back to the beginning when we were talking about what street belongs to what school. So now we have a good understanding of that, you know, not that we didn't before, but we have everything down to like the...
They said they were. We do have someone on detail for that as well. It may not be enough, but at this point, when you say putting the carton for the horse, one thing I want to say is this data actually will help us. This data, because this data, this is the foundation to us to figure out what problems we have and to figure out how we can maneuver through them. But there are two corrective actions that we put in place so far to try to fix the issue with kids in the Philadelphia area that are, are going to our schools. So just to answer those two questions. But we're not to the point where we had this under control by any means necessary.
One thing, one thing concerns me about people coming into the area and can live with anyone. When we moved into Yaden, we had decided, our boys were in private school and we decided that we were going to send them to public school. We were not satisfied with what was going on at Pembroke East. So we went to, I think it's a, an area of, oh, it was Smartmore. And we were going to send our children there. We had to pay $3,400 each, each child. Now if these children are coming into our area and say they can live with anybody, are we charging them?
No, because they're residents.
If they do what, if they do that affidavit under the school code.
I have a hearing disability, so you have to really handle that.
If the adult swears out the affidavit saying that they will take responsibility for the child, then there's no to it, we can't charge tuition. They're simply entitled to attend the district.
A lot of the Smartmore able to charge us.
Because you weren't pretending that your child lived in Smartmore. You weren't giving them to another adult to take responsibility. You were just sending them to another district where you didn't live. So there was no affidavit for you.
So you're saying that somebody who just comes in and pretends gets away?
And Ms. Boykins, we, we have someone on staff. And if the administration gets information to suggest that it's a lie, that it's not real, the administration has and does conduct investigations and has and does remove those students. They get, they get sent back?
And they get fined as well, just to let you know. They, some of them do get fined. You know, it's not like we lose out with everything, but it's, it's hard to keep track of as well.
Okay, if I, if I, if I may, I need to, we haven't even started our regular meeting. So if we may, do you have a question, Ruth?
How much is the homeless population? How many students are considered homeless?
Right now, 50. And, but once they, once they say homeless, all questions... And, but once they, once they say homeless, all questions stop.
The other thing is...
By law.
Not just homeless, but we have a lot of foster parents who are taking children in, you know, and being foster parents. Their parents may live in Philly, but their foster parents are residents here, and that's where they attend school, if that's what's determined in the best interest of the child.
All right, one more question from the public, please.
My children never went to a public school, you know, we moved here 35 years ago, they always went to private school. And I just think it's blatantly unfair that the taxes are so lucrative. And I have to pay them, and I don't even, I mean, when my nieces came to live with me, we put them in private school, simply because the schools were not up to par. You know what I'm saying? So it just seems like, there's got to be, I see kids getting on the bus, going, leaving the schools all the time, you know they live in Philly.
No, so I'm going to stop right here, because that's a different conversation about taxation. And we can talk about that at another point, that's not a part of this conversation. And just because a child gets on a bus, you can't wrap yourself in all those assumptions. They could be, you know, they could be staying late for...
They could be me and mom and dad.
Right, they could be leaving for sports, and that's the easiest way to get across. You don't, like, you just don't have enough information for every child that gets on a SEPTA bus to assume.
I'm not making a blanket statement, I'm just saying that I know a lot of those kids that live in this community. And so, I just...
What I want to add, what we used to do in the past, and hopefully we can maybe do it in the future, that I think will answer some of the questions, you know, from the residents that are here, used to give a report. They would do a report, and I think if we start going back and giving that report of them being investigated, and how many students have been released from the school district, I think we'll get a little more positive answer from the public sector. I can't remember the last time we done that.
Mr. Rude used to do that at those point.
All right. Okay, so we're going to stop this part of our meeting.
Can we say thank you to you guys? We really appreciate it. We'll be in touch, because, you know, as we discuss the different scenarios, then I'll be back in touch with you, okay?
All right, thank you very much.